And I'm good. Here.
It's 5:30. I'd like to call this special meeting to order. And first order of business is the city manager's comments, reorganization. Kelly?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, I wanted to report to you that we have been working with the commission on some of your directives, and I would like to go over those. As we discussed, they would like the city manager to be more of a CEO position, dealing with external relationships and issues, strategy and planning, and project development initiatives. I'm going to take this off a second. And then, the assistant city manager position has to be more of a COO, internal operations and issues, project management as assigned. And, as you know, the city manager appoint is directly reports to the city commission. And with the new reorganization, the direct reports to the city manager will be the admin team, which is the assistant city manager, police chief, finance director, administrative aide, and then the appointments are the city attorney and municipal judge. With that, the assistant city manager will report to the city manager, and I would like to announce that my appointment to that position is David Cowan. And with this promotion, David's direct reports will be the building inspector, code enforcement, fire and EMS chief, memorial hall supervisor, park and zoo director, public works director, and utilities director. And I would like to congratulate David Cowan and ask him to come up front with the commissioners, and we'll take a photo.
Over there. You want to do this, Sid? I gotta grab my mask. I got a leash on. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Hi. Hello?
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, is this a city meeting?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
All right. This is England Porter. I'm just with the diversity task force, and I saw calling in was an option, so I did.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
So, we just called the meeting to order and took care of the first item of business was the reorganization from the city manager's comments. The next item on the agenda is the discussion, discuss the police department's response to the Chamber of Commerce Subcommittee, the Diversity Task Force, policing Subcommittee concerns regarding police reforms. So, at this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Chief Harrison.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
And Commissioners and England. England's also on my police chief's advisory committee, so. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight. The background on this is, I hate having mine back to everybody, but the background on this is that in the wake of the George Floyd murder, the diversity task force formed a policing Subcommittee because they had questions. And I view this as an opportunity to present accurate information, because as we all know in the media, depending on which political bent you have, that's the media that you're going to seek to learn from. And you may not always get an unbiased spin on the information that's provided to you regardless of which direction you lean. So, I'm pleased to have this opportunity to present this information about the Independence Police Department. This is not a national discussion, because I'm not concerned with, while I am concerned to some degree with what's occurring around the country, I can only impact my little corner of the world, just like all of you and just like everybody out here. And so, we need to all take responsibility to impact our corner of the world. And the rest of the world will just hopefully try to do the right thing as well. But, we'll just get started here. So, the first thing that was, the committee wanted to know about was bias-based policing. And let me add in before I get rolling too fast, the, we have started meeting, my hope with this project was that I would have an opportunity to meet with this policing Subcommittee, and that we could go in-depth on the portions of this that they felt like they needed to have more information on, or they felt like they wanted to impact change in the organization. So, we are now in that process, and we have met, and from the beginning of the conversations, it sounds like they're satisfied with a lot of the information that they've been provided. And now, we're just working through to set goals together on how we move forward from here in our community. So, but the first thing I want to talk about is bias-based policing. Bias-based policing in the state, we have a department policy on this, which is, if you look through the source documents, those of you at home, it's a policy number 401, bias-based policing, and then also policy number 504, governing traffic and parking citations. So, the first question from the task force was, is there a disparate treatment of subgroups? This is a good question, this is a great question to ask. So, what you see in front of you here is a disparity index. And the way a disparity index works is, ideally, you want to see a one. That means for every one person that populates a certain demographic, you should have one contact. So, what we're monitoring here is officer-initiated contacts. These are not calls for service. These are not going out and making an arrest on a police report, or follow-up on an investigation. You cannot control who you contact, what they look like when you are called, when you go out on a call for service. You can't control the direction that an investigation takes you. But what you might be able to have bias in would be the things that you initiate as a police officer. So, we monitor that, and that's through monitoring our traffic stops. So, ideally, again, you want to see that one-to-one. So, if 10% of your population is African-American, then the hope would be that 10% of your traffic stops are African-American drivers, and you would have a one-to-one ratio, if that makes sense. As you look up here, you can see a disparity index with just the population of independents alone. The research, when we started monitoring bias-based policing in independents, I contacted, the state of Missouri started monitoring what they call racial profiling in around 2001, 2002. And I contacted the researchers that were hired by the Attorney General's Office in Missouri to set up their racial profiling monitoring program. I was able to get in touch with all three of them back in 2016, and believe it or not, they spent some time on the phone with me. One spent about an hour and a half on the phone with me, and we discussed the ins and outs of monitoring bias-based policing in this, in the fashion that we're discussing tonight. So, my conversation is going to, in a little bit, center, kind of bring some of this home and center around, what does the data mean? How much meaning can we apply to the data? So, as we move along, we'll get into that. But if you look here, you can see in the first column, you see race and ethnicity demographics. In the next column, you see the independents disparity index. This is simply the population of independents disparity index as far as officer-initiated stops go. In the next column, I took the population of independents and then included the population of independents community college. It's very close to us. There's, in the counting period since 2016, there's been various athletic events that are hosted here in town, and they have a portion of the campus here in town. So, I felt to become, to gain a more equitable presentation of how we are performing, it was appropriate to use ICC's population, or include ICC's population. And then, over to the far right, that final column, you see it has a disparity index range. And I'll explain why we use that range. Or, when you, now, the one thing to look at, when you look at the black demographic there, you see, if you're just looking at independents, you're looking at 1.7. So, for every, what that number would mean, if it was literal, is that for every one black person that stopped, or every one black person in our community, there's 1.7 traffic stops. Now, if you slide over and you include the independents community college into the number, it gets down to 1.3, which is a very equitable number. And then, if you look at the far side, it looks like we're either doing a very equitable job, or we're doing a really terrible job, because we're up there to 2.7. So, let's talk about that number for a minute, and what that means. So, if you look here, the table that I used from the Census Bureau had a plus or minus on it, and that's why I used a range. Because I don't know how the US Census Bureau developed their plus or minus, but my understanding is, if I take their source literally, that they're saying, when you look at the white demographic, they're saying there are 7,563 whites and independents, give or take 252 people. That's a pretty big chunk, especially when you get into the other demographics that have a smaller group representing there. And you look at other, you have 66 in the other demographic, but then in the plus or minus, you have 70. So, I mean, when you look at the black demographic, the plus or minus is almost half of the total. So, it really becomes difficult to pin down the numbers with statistical significance, if that makes sense. So, this is, on the left, that pie chart is just a graphical representation of independents alone by racial demographic and race and ethnicity. And if you look to the right, that is a demographic that includes ICC in it. So, you can see there's some slight changes there, but when you're talking about computing statistics, those slight changes add up. So, now, we're going to get into the limitations, and this is what I gathered from the researchers in my long discussions with them back in 2016. When the demographics that I'm providing here tonight comes directly from the Census Bureau, and I included their tables in the source documents, the problem with that is, is not every citizen in independents drives a car. Not every citizen in independents is of driving age. So, now, we have a weakness in what we're looking at here. Also, we have US 60 and US 175 coming through town. How many of those stops involve out-of-town drivers? I don't know. Then, we look at ICC's impact on independents demographics. They don't add 15% to the population, but they add a 15 percentage increase to the local population, which is a significant percentage increase. And the reason that I justify adding ICC is, about a mile from town, this is the most practical option for students to come for retail and entertainment, and of course, you have ICC West, and during the counting period, you had athletic events occurring here in town. Another weakness is that the US Census Bureau, I was not able to include, the way that they built the table, it was not inclusive in this particular table. And so, I can't tell you the impact that people that claim two or more, or identify as two or more races, we can't put them into a category and then, and make a fair compare or an equitable comparison as to how officers are behaving. So, that throws the information off. Another problem is, is that the table that I've used did not have any data for the Hispanic population on it. It was only race. It didn't include ethnicity, so I had to go to a separate table from the Census Bureau. And of course, when you change tables, you change studies, you change how they gathered the information, what their definitions were. So, it creates an issue of accuracy again. Another problem that I found in doing this, I think I can probably work with our vendor and consider some pluses and minuses to remedy this issue, but another issue is that there's a difference between ethnicity and race. While two people may look alike, physi, in physical appearance, they could be two separate ethnicities. For example, you could have someone from Wales and someone from Ireland standing next to each other. Those are two separate ethnicities, but most likely, they would appear very similar. You wouldn't be able to identify their ethnicity just by their appearance. That's the difference between race and ethnicity. So, when we look at the way that we tabulate in our, in our database, Hispanic is an "and", it's not an "and/or". So, in other words, when you hit, when you select that Hispanic box, it's going to come after you have selected black or white, if that makes sense. So, it's not off by itself. Another problem is, that when you participate in the census, if you were biracial, you could claim one race, whichever one you wanted to identify as, but the officer might perceive you to be another race. And so, from an, from an ethical perspective as a police officer, if I had a choice, I'm going to go probably with the predominant features that I'm looking at. Otherwise, someone could accuse me of saying, well, you know, you took a biracial person and claimed them as white to make your numbers look better. And so, that's a concern. The other issue is the plus or minus. I don't know how to account for that plus or minus, other than to create a range. And so, that's what I did with it. And that plus or minus comes from the Census Bureau, and I didn't have an opportunity to go back and look at how they tabulated, or how they populated that table, what their definitions were, and the science, the survey science behind it. So, all that to say, we need to be careful drawing any solid conclusions from the bias-based policing data. The monitoring is voluntary, it's not required by state law. I don't understand why a police department in this day and age would not voluntarily want to have this information available to them. I think it's important to the, to a leader, to ensure that their personnel are behaving appropriately. I think it's important to the community to ensure that they can trust their police department to be equitable. The purpose behind it is, again, is about transparency, and, you know, I want our department to be as open of a book as we can be. Because when, as, as much as we can be open, I think that fosters trust. And if we can foster trust in the good times, you know, you see bad things do happen, and you never know when those touchpoint events are going to occur. But if we're behaving responsibly in the good times as a law enforcement agency, hopefully, when those unfortunate events occur, our community will give us the opportunity to get to the truth and do the right thing. And that's a part of why I'm up here talking tonight, is to help build that relationship. This is the bias-based policing data form that the officers complete for every traffic stop, and this is what we use to fill out the, populate the database. Okay, the next question that the Subcommittee had was, how often do we train on our weapons? For those of you following at home, these source documents will be in Appendix B. Probably no one following that closely at home, but. How often do we train on weapons? Currently, we qualify once a year, although most police officers are going to be out training on their own quite frequently. My goal is, I've set the goal of wanting to train four times a year, and the training that I would, I desire to do is, the first thing is the Kansas C-Post qualification, the Commission on Peace Officer Standard and Training. They mandate, and it's covered in state law and state regulation, that we qualify every year. No police chief or law enforcement leader in the state has any control over that. And if you've got really good vision, you can zip right through there and see the exact course of fire that they require. If you look over here to the left, I pulled this right off of their page to show the regulation that I'm talking about. The next training I would like to do every year would be a tactical shoot, which would be on the range, live fire, shooting and moving from cover to cover, shoot and no-shoot targets that are mobile. The next training I would like to do every year is a force-on-force exercise, and a force-on-force exercise would be similar to what you would see in a paintball operation. And then, finally, patrol rifle training. We would prob, this probably would have been the first year that we were able to accomplish that. However, our instructors for each specialty, the courses have been put off due to the pandemic. So, we haven't been able to get our instructors into that training. They opened the training up, we get signed up, they postponed the training. So, that's happened to us two or three times this year. So, we just have to be patient, and we, we will get there. So, how frequently do they require qualification for the weapons? This is once a year, and the officers have to achieve a 70% minimum on a prescribed course of fire, and that is set in state statute. How frequently do they train on soft skills like de-escalation and anti-bias? So, we do, our soft skills training in this, for this slide, we, that is required by state law, that all law enforcement officers in the state of Kansas have to go through bias-based policing training annually. We use the fair and impartial policing curriculum for our training, and the reason that we use that is that fair and impartial policing, what we find is that all of us have implicit biases that we're not aware of, and these come from way back in time, and they were designed as a feature to keep us safe out of self-defense. So, when we see someone that looks different from us, or that we don't know, our mind starts to fill in the blanks for us as a cautionary measure. And so, the value of learning about fair and impartial policing is that you start to recognize your implicit biases when they come up, and then, when you recognize them, you can change your decision-making path so that you are more equitable with the people that you encounter on a regular basis. I have gone through racial profiling training since 2001 or 2002, whenever the state of Missouri started doing it. By the time I came to Kansas in 2016, it was required here well before that. I can't remember the exact year, but it, it's in statute in both states. And what I found was, in the almost 20, or almost 19 years I was in Missouri, was, depending on who your instructor was, guided the quality of training that you got. Some instructors took it very seriously, and they brought some good quality training to you every year, and you learned. Some instructors were just checking the box for the year and getting you on out the door. And that's probably pretty common in all professions. What I have found with fair and impartial policing, though, is it's very meaningful training. And so, that's, when I went through it the first time, I was sold on it. I walked out of that training going, you know what, I'm not as great a person as I thought I was, and I have some things that I need to begin to remember as I start making decisions out on the street. So, I hope that it impacts all law enforcement that way. We provide this training to our police chief's advisory committee. Have we ever provided that to the diversity task force?
Yes.
We have? Yeah, we did, didn't we? That's right. We did last, was it last spring or last fall we did? So, yes, so, we are willing to share that training with, with other members of the community if they're interested in it. And we also provide it to the advisory committee, if I didn't say that already. One other thing is, they ask about de-escalation training. So, this year, this summer, we were able to partner with Parsons PD, and we got some high-quality training. We weren't able to do it in person, of course, because of the pandemic, but Parsons PD and I are working together to do a team, an instructor team, for de-escalation training, and we have to, it's a certification that we have to renew every year through Dolan Consulting. Harry Dolan is a retired police chief with a lot of years of experience, and I have to say that, as impactful as FIP training was, fair and impartial policing training was, I have to say that the de-escalation training was even more impactful. And it's, it's not a repla, it is a tool. It is not something that when someone comes at the machete with you, you start trying to empathize. That is not appropriate. It is not use-of-force training. De-escalation training has a place. It is just another tool in the toolbox for the officer to employ. And by the way, as time passes, starting in 2021, we're hoping to roll that out to anyone in the community that is interested in going through that. I've talked with the city manager, she's interested in running all city employees through that. And you want to talk about some good quality customer service training, that's what it is. It's good stuff. It's good for the family, and it's good for the soul. So, I really like it. So, moving on, use-of-force training. Is there a policy against chokeholds? So, I don't know that any ill-intent was meant by this term, chokehold in the question, but I am going to get up on a soapbox, and I don't intend to alienate anybody, but I am going to get on my soapbox for a minute, a couple of times tonight. The term chokehold is misleading and inflammatory. The word choke does not appear in our policy manual, and of course, this is a reference to the carotid control hold, which is governed in our use-of-force policy 300.3.4. The product, the difference between the choke, between a choke, which I really, I don't, I don't know what a chokehold is. I'm just going to throw that out there. I know what it means to choke someone, or to strangle someone, or to pinch their airway down. Of course, I know what that means. That is not what we do. What we do restricts the blood flow to the brain, and it causes someone to pass out for a brief moment in time. And in my experience, it's almost like a light switch. When it is applied appropriately within training and used at the proper point in, as a reasonable use of force, you cannot just walk up to someone and select what level of force you're going to use on them, including that, whether it be taser, pepper spray, straight stick, baton, or a carotid control hold, you don't get to select arbitrarily what level of force you, you use on people. It is governed under the Supreme Court case of Graham versus Connor and others, but Graham v. Connor is the landmark case, the law of the land. And Graham v. Connor says that the officer will be judged from a reasonable perspective. What should the, what did the officer know at the time? Not what we learned later. Hindsight is 2020, and we all know that it's very inappropriate to apply hindsight to judge our decisions on. We can learn from hindsight, but you should not be assessing people's actions based on hindsight. You should be assessing their actions based on what they knew at that moment in time. And so, there is a time when the carotid control hold is a reasonable use of force. It cannot be used when it is not. No different, again, than, than a, than a strike, or an arm bar, or a straight stick, or pepper spray. So, but again, it doesn't restrict the airway, it restricts the flow of blood to the brain temporarily. Across the country, and this is, by the way, that up there is straight out of the, the policy manual under the carotid control hold in our use-of-force policy. Why is this in here? Why is this a concern? Across the country, we see these groups saying, hey, we need to get rid of the chokehold. I have no problem with getting rid of chokeholds, you shouldn't be using them anyways unless it's a deadly force scenario. Again, the chokehold is not this. We do not train on chokeholds, we train on this. If it becomes a deadly force scenario, then there are no rules. When deadly force is a reasonable use of force, you could pick a table up and smash them with a table, you can run them down with a car, whatever it takes. Deadly force is a whole other scenario. But this is not that. There is an outcry across the country to not allow police to do carotid control holds, or any holds around the neck. Now, I reserve the right to change my mind as more and better information comes in. And I think any wise person among us should go through life with that perspective, otherwise is to be hard-headed and probably short-sighted. At this time, I have some concerns. I am not going to arbitrarily change or take tools away from a police officer, because one example that I can give is, you know, if you look at, if you look at what I'm carrying right now, when I'm on duty, I wear my vest, my outer vest carrier when I'm out in an enforcement fashion, and I have more options. But if someone were to attack me in this very room, and at this very moment, and I was alone, the only tool that I have is a firearm. If I cannot control them with my hands, then I am left with deadly force. Is that appropriate? It's not. That is why we give our officers pepper spray, and we train them. That is why we give them a straight, or an expandable baton, and we train them. It's why we give them a taser, and we train them. And by the way, we don't train anybody to what I think we should be training them to. We don't train them to what our use-of-force instructors feel like they should be training them to. We train them to the standards. We, we train them to the standard of the manufacturer. We train them to the standard of Graham v. Connor. We do not go out here and just wing it. This is, everything we do, I try to have, make sure that we have a structured, foundational, principled approach to it. So, a carotid control hold is no different if you look at what I'm carrying right now, when I'm on duty, I wear my vest, my outer vest carrier when I'm out in an enforcement fashion and I have more options. But if someone were to attack me in this very room and at this very moment and I was alone, the only tool that I have is a firearm. If I cannot control them with my hands, then I am left with deadly force. Is that appropriate? It's not. That is why we give our officers pepper spray and we train them. That is why we give them a straight or an expandable baton and we train them. It's why we give them a taser and we train them. And by the way, we don't train anybody to what I think we should be training them to. We don't train them to what our use-of-force instructors feel like they should be training them to. We train them to the standards. We train them to the standard of the manufacturer. We train them to the standard of Graham v. Connor. We do not go out here and just wing it. This is, everything we do, I try to have, make sure that we have a structured, foundational, principled approach to it. So a carotid control hold is no different than a straight stick, baton or using good de-escalation tactics and taking your ego out of the conversation and trying to calm the situation down. These are all tools and these are all important tools that need to be available to the officer. And I believe they best serve the officer and the citizen, the person that, who may become a subject of a use of force. So my questions are, before we remove the carotid control hold from our policy manual, I need to know, what does the research say? I believe that decisions should be based on evidence, not politics, not what feels good, not what's in style, not what's playing on the news right now. No, there needs to be solid research done. And I have not been able to locate that research at this time as to when police are not allowed to use the carotid control hold, do they have a safer community? I have not been able to find research and I have looked some, not extensively, but I did spend some time looking for that research and I haven't found it yet. But there's good news for us. Not for everyone in the country, but good news for us. The city of New York, their city council passed a lot of ordinances and I believe the state has passed some state laws that criminalized a lot of police control tactics. Among them is anything around the neck, the carotid control hold. Now, the beauty of this is, A, it doesn't jeopardize any independent police officers and it doesn't jeopardize any independent citizens. I don't know what it's going to do for the people and the police officers of New York. I can't control that. But what it is going to do in the near, in the coming years is provide us with evidence of, is use of force going to become more severe in that community as officers' tools are taken away from them? In other words, are suspects going to get hurt worse when they become, when they are subjected to a use of force? I'm quite confident those studies will be coming out in the near future, in the next couple of years. Are officers being injured at a higher rate versus uses of force because of these restrictions? I think these questions will be answered. I think even more questions will be answered and we're going to learn some valuable information as the academics study what's happening in New York City. But the bottom line is, what makes independence safer? What reduces crime and independence? And that is the direction that we should be going. Another question that the committee had was, is there a policy on the duty to intervene? And we do, yes. And our use-of-force policy 300.2.1, duty to intercede, you can read it there. Any officer present and observing another officer using force that is clearly beyond that which is objectively reasonable under the circumstances shall, when in a position to do so, intercede to prevent the use of unreasonable force. An officer who observes another employee use force that exceeds the degree of force permitted by law should promptly report these observations to his supervisor. In other words, police officer, when you see someone, when you see one of your fellow officers, regardless of the department or agency that they're in, when you witness an excessive use of force, you are A, to intervene and B, report it. And what's interesting to me is that, you know, some of this is probably new to a lot of people across the country. I have been working under this policy since probably 2012. And it existed prior to that. So a lot of the things we're talking about tonight are not new. Again, let's go back to the bias-based policing. I have been under some form of monitoring for bias-based policing for almost 20 years. So these are not new topics. These are topics that law enforcement has internally been working on for a long time. I think the biggest, one of the biggest problems is, is that as law enforcement, we're running a hundred different directions. And one of those directions that we're not running is to share with our community what we're doing as much as we should be. And if you don't take the time, you don't make the time. It's difficult to communicate well. So. So the next question was, along with that duty to intercede, I also want to add in here that IPD voluntarily reports qualifying uses of force to the FBI use-of-force databases. And the state of Kansas is starting a different use-of-force database with different standards than the FBI's. And we are going to be one of three cities in our class. I believe there's going to be nine cities across the state that are voluntarily participating in the experimental rollout of this. And I have volunteered our department to be one of the three cities that are, of our class that participates in this use of force. And we have a meeting next week to kick that off and I'm not sure when that process will begin. KBI's statistical wing is, or data gathering wing is running that program. So I thought it would be nice to share that. And again, what we supply to the FBI, what we supply to KBI, this is voluntary. None of this is required at this time. In the very near future, I anticipate that nearly all of these things we talk about tonight will become law. The next, oh, I also want to go back to the carotid control hold. There are some situations that are maybe out of my control. And again, you can't be a knucklehead in life and just do, you know, it's not the Jerry Show. This is the Independence Police Department and I am a steward of that resource for this community for the time that I am here. And there are some things that can change that. Number one, the will of the commission, the will of the city manager, the will of the citizenry through the commission could compel us to remove that policy from our manual. Presidential executive order, I'm researching an executive order right now that could impact that being in our policy manual. If, under certain circumstances from that executive order, we may be in a position from practicality where we have to take it out. If the lawyers that write our policy manual contact us and say, you need to update that policy, we've taken that out, then we will have to take it out. I'm not going to step outside of an attorney's guidance when that attorney's job is to protect the city. State legislature is looking at this. The governor has a commission or a committee impaneled right now and they are looking at the carotid control hold. There may be a time in the near future where the state of Kansas, the legislature says, no more. If that, so there are some scenarios that are outside of my control and those will compel us to remove the carotid control hold from the officer's toolbox. The next question, can the code of conduct and all other policies be placed on the city website? Yes, they can. They also wanted to know if there was some kind of code of ethics. And in 1957, the International Association of Chiefs of Police adopted the law enforcement code of ethics and it's the second page of our policy manual. So we have adopted the law enforcement code of ethics as enshrined by the IACP. Our contract with the vendor that we use for our policy manual does allow us to put the policy manual on the city's website. There is a state statute governing police department policies and they are open record by state law with the exception of any policy that goes to tactics. So we're not going to give, ne'er-do-wells our playbook. We're not going to tell you or anybody else how we respond to an armed robbery. That's, that's not for you to know. You wouldn't want Coach Reed to give his playbook over to the Titans, I hope. Good, reasonable people in here. All right. So, you know, it's no different. We're not going to give our playbook out. But what we're going to do in 2021 is I'm going to impanel a committee on the police department of my subject matter experts that I work with. For instance, use-of-force instructor, taser instructor, emergency vehicle operations instructors, those kind of people. And we're going to work our way through the policy manual. And they will review each policy and they will make a determination off if there's any tactics discussed in that policy manual. And if it's impractical to put that policy out, then we'll just leave it off. If it's simple enough to just redact the tactics out of it, then we'll just redact those out and put the, and leave the policy in there to put up on the city's website. So our goal for 2021 is to put all policies from the police department that meet the open record requirement and make that available, become more transparent with our community. And the reason for that is it's a little bit of a check and balance. Because someone out on the street can have a contact with a police officer and oftentimes they will call and make a complaint and it turns out that what the officer did was within policy inappropriate. And so as a citizen, you can make that assessment by going straight to our webpage. You can look at our policy manual eventually and you'll be able to make that assessment on your own as to whether or not you feel like you need to continue on with the complaint. And it won't be up to the committee what gets released. It will be up to me because the buck stops here. And so it will be my responsibility to adhere to the state law like it always is with all the decisions that come out of the police department. We also have an oath of office that we have to take. So, and I may not have included that in the... Yes, this is the oath required for certification. So I did not put the code of conduct on here. You can find the code of conduct online in a number of places. But this is our oath required for certification by the state of Kansas. So every police officer has to recite this, this, has to make this pledge. The next question was, is there a policy against the using, is there a policy against using no-knock search warrants? And we all know about the Breonna Taylor case. I believe it's out of Louisville. No, we don't have a policy against no-knock search warrants. We don't need a policy against no-knock search warrants. No-knock search warrants are governed by Richard, Richards versus Wisconsin. It's a Supreme Court ruling. And I don't want to go too in-depth into this for time purposes, but people are welcome to look that up on their own. It's also in the source documents. But in order to qualify for a no-knock search warrant, the Supreme Court says you have to be able to meet certain specific standards. So when you go and apply for your search warrant, not only do you have to justify to the judge and, you know, articulate for the judge the probable cause, the specifics of probable cause for what you are alleging the crime to be and the specifics, the specific items of evidence you are looking for at the specific location you are looking. You also need to specifically tell the judge why you qualify for a no-knock search warrant. So again, this is not something that the police officer just gets to decide on their own. There is a standard that has to be met. And there is an article in the source documents for those that would like to look on, look into that. What are the school, the next question was, what are the school resource officer policies? There are no specific policies directed at the SRO. The SRO is mentioned in our community relations policy. I think it's important to note that the term juvenile appears approximately 181 times in our policy manual in about 10 different policies. So why don't we have a policy for how an SRO conducts him or herself? Well, the short answer to that is, all police officers are required to adhere to all policies. You don't get to have your own special policy because you're the police chief. You don't get to have your own special policy because you're a brand-new police officer and you just didn't know any better. No, you are responsible to know better. I don't care if you've been here one year or 20. So there's no special rules. Everybody is treated the same. And that's why there's no special rules for the, for the school resource officer. There are, however, policies, and this is what I think the question goes to is, how are you treating children? That's where my mind goes right away. How are you treating juveniles? Yes, there are a number of policies that guide how officers handle juvenile matters. Again, let's go back to one of the foundational points of tonight's lecture. We are not out there doing just whatever we want to do. Our behavior is, there's almost always a policy or law or a code of ethic that goes back to our decision-making. As far as the school resource officer's role, we have adopted the NASRO triad concept. That's the National Association of School Resource Officers. And their triad concept is that the SRO is an educator, guest lecturer in practicality, informal counselor, mentor, and then a law enforcement officer. We are not there to enforce school policy unless it becomes an interest of public safety. So, and there's a lot of, not a lot, but there is some controversy out there surrounding, does the presence of a school resource officer lead to more arrests? Do those more arrests lead to more kids going to prison? They call it the schools-to-prison pipeline. Is there a racial component to that schools-to-prison pipeline? From what I have read, there, I was not able to locate a whole lot of research at the time. It's been a couple of years since I looked into that concept. A couple of years ago, I didn't see a whole lot of information out there. And for every one study that said there's no such thing as a schools-to-prison pipeline, there's another study that says it's a terrible thing. So the long and the short of it though is, is that in the city of Independence, that's, again, that's where my concerns lie. We, we instruct our personnel, you don't enforce school policy, you enforce law. And you have the discretionary decision-making power, by the way, of how you carry that out. We don't have a zero-tolerance law for juvenile behavior in the schools, although some people feel like maybe we should. But police officers throughout history have had discretionary decision-making authority. And I think it's important that officers have that for a lot of different reasons. It's probably outside the scope of tonight's discussion. We can go into that another time if the community would like to hear about it. The committee asks, do officers have qualified immunity? So this is another one of those areas. Now, I'm going to be, to be clear, I am not an attorney. And I wasn't brought here to be an attorney. And I'm not going to pretend to be an attorney. But I have looked into this to the best of my abilities and the time that I have been allowed to study this. This is a complicated concept. And like all good complicated concepts, it gets twisted and distorted by special interest groups in the media. Depending on what side of the aisle you're on is probably the bent that you're going to get on qualified immunity. But from a, and by the way, my source document on this was Daigle Law Group. They're a consulting firm that kind of guides law enforcement agencies in these, in similar matters. So qualified immunity is a Supreme Court decision. It's not legislation. So then that begs the question, can a state legislature, we see states across the country trying to outlaw qualified immunity. Can a legislature remove a constitutional protection? From my understanding, state legislatures can make any law and overrule any Supreme Court decision except those with a constitutional basis. Qualified immunity is a constitutionally-based court decision. So in legal theory, according to my training here, you shouldn't be able to outlaw qualified immunity. So we'll see how cases play out in the future. But, and by the way, qualified immunity applies to all government employees, all government representatives. So as you guys act under your authority, under color of law, as, as political representatives of the city of Independence, you are subject to U.S. Code 1983 in your actions. So if you were to violate someone's civil rights in your position as a commissioner or be accused of violating someone's civil rights, then qualified immunity may or may not be available to you depending on the situation. So it, again, applies to all governmental representatives. And the purpose behind qualified immunity is to prevent frivolous lawsuits so that a government doesn't shut down for fear of making a decision and so that local governments aren't bankrupted through legal costs. That's the legal theory. It's grossly misrepresented as a shield from liability that encourages misconduct. It is not a special liability protection for police officers. It does not insulate officers from liability for egregious misconduct. The purpose is to hold government officials accountable, but to balance accountability with shielding government officials from harassment, distraction, and liability when they act reasonably. And we need to remember that, when they act reasonably. And it all, by the way, it also shields the taxpayer because as we all know, if any of us were to be sued, the city would be sued right alongside of us or in lieu of us if we are indemnified. And so it's ultimately the taxpayer that's going to suffer from a frivolous lawsuit or even just the cost of representing. or even just the cost of representing the city in a frivolous lawsuit. It allows government officials the breathing room to make reasonable mistakes when there's not a law to guide their decision-making. So you can make a mistake and be protected from a frivolous lawsuit on that, regarding that mistake. It is not automatic. If it was automatic, it would be called automatic immunity. So keep in mind, it's called qualified immunity. You have to qualify for it, and you don't qualify for it by taking an oath and getting certified as a police officer, it has nothing to do with police, and it governs, again, all governmental personnel. I won't go into the Supreme Court case, but it's, I believe it's Saucier v. Katz, and we get pretty complicated, and for time's sake tonight, again, those sources are available on the city's website on the agenda, people are welcome to go look at those source documents and for their, to their own satisfaction. What I do want to skip down to, though, here, is that UCLA law professor Joanna Schwartz did a two-year study of 1,183, 1983 cases. Again, U.S. Code 1983, 42 USC 1983 is the civil rights statute that we're, that we're talking about here. This is, this is the law that people are able to sue federally, sue the government under. And she found that qualified immunity was used in 4% of eligible cases. So she looked at five different federal districts over a two-year period, very recently, and it was used in 4% of the cases that, in which it was eligible to be used. Now, her study, her argument based on her study is, it's used so little that it isn't serving its purpose of presenting frivolous lawsuits. I think she has a solid point, but I think there's another point that she makes as well, and she, I don't know that anybody is making this claim, but I would argue that the study also shows that it's not being abused as a blanket shield. If it was being abused as a blanket shield for police officers, it would be used a whole lot more than 4% of the cases. I think that's a solid argument to make. So again, I, for these reasons, I think that this qualified immunity discussion that's happening in the media is misleading, and I don't think it is going to have the impact that different groups that are, that are lobbying against it, I don't really think it's gonna have a meaningful impact like they want it to have. The next question was regarding what I would, or what, in our, in our profession, we call it weaponizing the police, and you can see videos of where, you know, someone's in a park and they see someone that looks different from them, and so they call the police and say, this person looks suspicious, and when the police get there, they think they're gonna give the, they think that the officers are gonna buy their story and they're gonna take action that favors the caller, and oftentimes, we're seeing cases where the caller ends up getting arrested for filing a false police report, and the officers are behaving justly. And so a valid concern, I can understand why the question comes up, you know, because we don't want our local police officers to be used against any of the citizens in our community. So the question is, if a report of a suspicious person is received by dispatch, what is the policy or procedure before an officer is sent? We, again, I'm gonna go back to one of my main principles for tonight's conversation, we're not winging it. We got a policy for that. And our dispatchers use a structured call-taking process, it's called emergency police dispatch. You guys are very familiar with emergency medical dispatch and the life-saving awards that have been given out to our dispatchers as they give pre-arrival instructions to the caller for CPR, for stopping the bleed, different things, correct? So this is very, it's the same concept, same company, same, same science behind it as far as studying it to make it efficient and effective. So anyways, but it's a structured call-taking process, and if you look through the talking points in the agenda online, you can see all the different things that the dispatcher will ask the caller when they call in. So it, and the design of that is for the dispatcher to gather important information for the police officer. What does the person look like? What are they armed with? What are they doing? You know, and it becomes a thought-provoking process for the dispatcher and for the police officer as this information is relayed, do we have a legitimate call here? Police officers, particularly experienced police officers, have a pretty good baloney stuffing detector. And when people start providing them with baloney stuffing, they can generally see through it pretty quick. And so that is one of the benefits of using EPD is to shine a light on what the officers need to make an assessment as they respond to the call. So the next question is, again, there's a picture of the call-taking card here, and again, the, the purpose here is to, this is some more instructions for a suspicious person call specifically. And those are some of the questions that the dispatcher is going to ask. So you can see there's quite a bit of detail that goes into taking this call. And while we're here, let's talk about racial profiling real quickly, and this is by court definition, if you have a legitimate suspect description, that is not racial profiling. And for our community's safety, if you saw someone under attack, I should think, as the caller, you would want that officer to know exactly who they need to get to right away. You would want that, you would want that police officer to know, what race is that person? If they're white, you don't want them wasting time looking for people of a different ethnicity or race. Let's get to the suspect, right? Let's stop the problem. When you have a valid description, it is not racial profiling to key in on someone based on their race. And that's, that's Supreme Court rulings. So where is the line of engagement with the citizen by an officer on a report of a suspicious person? When do you not engage the citizen? Well, the good news is, we have a policy for that. And policy 400.3, if you're reading along, and the policy states that responding to calls for service is a function that officers are expected to perform. Officers could choose not to engage, you know, if it's a suspicious person call and the officer gets on scene and it's their normal assigned area and they recognize the person and they know the logic behind whatever that person is doing, they're probably not going to contact that person. They're not necessarily obligated to contact that person, they are obligated to look into it to their satisfaction and make a good decision that protects our community. I can give you an example, I believe it was yesterday, we had a call of a man down unresponsive, and when the officers arrived, it was a plumber laying down working on a house. So if, if, in that scenario, if they pulled up and they saw a plumber's truck advertised as such, and they saw a guy whose pants don't go all the way up as high as we'd like for him to, working on something, we could probably all go, you know what, I'm just gonna keep on rolling because that guy is probably doing something legitimate. So that's kind of the decision-making process there. Another point here, dispatchers are not allowed to screen calls, and by screen calls, I mean dispatchers are not allowed to say, this doesn't sound important, I'm not gonna give it out. No, no. That's not, that happens on rare occasion, and it gets dealt with when it occurs, we don't tolerate that. And for, there's a lot of things that could go south in a hurry if dispatchers start eliminating calls. It is up to the officer to respond to that call and, using due diligence, make an appropriate response, that they can articulate why they did what they did. We don't want to create unnecessary risk for the city because an officer wasn't sent to something that they should have been sent to. When you go to a suspicious person call, on occasion, you are allowed to detain someone for reasonable suspicion, so let's go back to our plumber scenario. Instead of there being a plumbing truck out there, there's nothing out there. They just see a guy messing around under a house. Well, the neighbor said that's suspicious, so the officer probably should go and find out what that person's doing. In that scenario, they have the authority to say, hey, come out here and talk to me for a minute. As long as they can articulate a list of facts or circumstances that may cause a reasonable person to suspect someone may be involved in criminal or dangerous activity. So I think it's reasonable to ask someone, why are you messing around with this person's house? Now, really quickly, you should be able to figure out that it's a plumber. Once you do, it's time to release them and move on. If you can't develop probable cause, then you need to, and probable cause is defined as reasonably believes there is a criminal activity related to, there is criminal activity related to this person. If they cannot articulate why there may be reasonable activity related to that person's conduct, they need to move on. They need to release that person and move on. So, and then coming back to de-escalation training, again, we're partnering with Parsons Police Department, and there's a screenshot of the system that we are using, that we're trained under to use, and we're developing a team approach, and we're hoping to kick that training off with Parsons PD personnel in October. We're hoping to roll it out for IPD personnel in, in late October, perhaps November, and then to area law enforcement in early 2021, and then we want to begin rolling that out to those that are interested in learning about it. So the Police Chiefs Advisory Committee is certainly going to get a taste of it. The Diversity Task Force, if they would like to invite us to deliver some of that training to them, we're more than happy to do that. And again, it's not, it's a principle, it's a, it's a foundational approach, and it's a, it is not a law enforcement tool, it is a societal tool, it's, it's a tool that all of us can use in our personal interactions in daily life. So the next topic is complaints. So the first question is, what is the process for investigating misconduct and complaints? So again, we got a policy for that. If the violation is a policy issue, it is investigated by either the administrative sergeant, who is with us, yes? Sergeant Dustin Stafford, he is with us tonight. He typically will be assigned Internal Affairs Investigations. So ultimately, it's up to me who investigates that, so if he's busy, sometimes I'll take them, and by the way, he and I have both been through specialized training for Internal Affairs Investigations. That's another thing, is our department is slowly but surely trying to put mechanisms in place that formalize our processes. And our Internal Affairs Investigations, we started formalizing a couple of years ago, and we've got them down pretty good now. So they take a structured, we have a structured approach to them, and they're all done, they all occur in a very similar fashion, they're all documented in a very similar fashion. And each step of that process is governed by our policies. And again, that policy is available in the, in the, on, in the agenda online. If, again, if it's a policy violation issue or the officer is accused of violating a policy, then it would be investigated internally by Dustin, myself, or whoever I assign that case to. Some of those will be assigned to a shift supervisor if it's a low-level deal. If it is a suspected criminal violation, however, we do our best to bring in an outside agency, whether that be KBI, the Sheriff's Office, or Coffeyville PD. In my tenure here, we have utilized the Sheriff's Office, Coffeyville PD, and KBI to investigate allegations that could have led to criminal misconduct. So we have, this is not a new thing, this is a very common thing throughout law enforcement, and we, we have provided an investigator for other agencies in our area as well, because if you need a favor, you better give a favor. And so we're happy to be a good team player, and we partner with area agencies really closely. We just had a meeting yesterday with a number of area law enforcement and other criminal justice personnel. And by the way, we meet monthly and quarterly. So complaints, this is something I really like to talk about, is how we accept complaints. The acceptance of complaints is one of the biggest cornerstones of community policing. This is your opportunity as a law enforcement agency to gain legitimacy with your community, to gain trust. So the easier you make that process, the better it serves the community and the more trust you have. So we are trying to make it as easy as water running downhill or as easy as it is for you to get on Amazon and buy something. We've tried to remove as much friction from that process as we can. So we have our complaints and commendation forms on the city website. So if you think an officer has done very good, an exceptional, an exceptional act, you are certainly welcome to get on there and nominate them for a commendation, we investigate those exactly the same way as we investigate a complaint. So those are available on the website. They are both available at the Independence Public Library, that was a change that came about from the Police Chiefs Advisory Committee. Bill Gore is here tonight, he's on the advisory committee, that was a suggestion of his, I believe. So a couple, two or three years ago, I believe, we started stocking our forms at the library. So if you need to make a complaint, you can go to the library and ask for a form there. Any member of the Police Chiefs Advisory Committee is required to facilitate getting you a complaint, so there are a number of people in here. Would you guys mind to stand up real quick? I'll try to keep it moving. But if you look across this room, you can see there's a number of people in here, and England on the phone, can you stand up for us, too, so everybody knows you're also on the advisory committee? So if you see any of these people out and about, you can ask them for a complaint form, and they will get it to you in some fashion. Every dispatcher, every police officer, including the police chief, including Sergeant Stafford, all IPD personnel, are required to provide complaint forms upon request. And by the way, all IPD personnel are required to wear their name tag in a fashion that it's visible, so they shouldn't have their sunglasses case protruding up over their name tag so that you can't see who you're dealing with. And by the way, all officers are required to provide you with their name and their badge number upon request. And if they don't, then I need to hear about it. Hopefully, we don't have anybody that would behave that way. We have a great bunch of folks, and we monitor that, and when things don't go right, we address it so that we continue to have a great bunch of folks. We also investigate anonymous third-party, and third-party complaints, and situations where the complainant refuses to provide a completed complaint form. I saw a TV news deal years ago where the officers refused to take the complaint for a number of reasons, and it was, frankly, it was tragic. I don't want that for our citizens. So we don't make excuses, we provide the form, if you don't want to sign it, don't sign it. If you don't want to tell us who you are, don't tell us who you are. If you want to complain to a city commissioner, and the city commissioner will bring that, I promise you, for all of you listening along and watching, I promise you, your commissioners will bring me the complaint, they've done it, and I have no doubt they will continue to do it. And I appreciate that. Because I view the complaint as an opportunity, A, to improve the department, and B, most of the time, demonstrate that we're doing it right. And sometimes, we find we need to make changes in policy, too, based on complaints. Do we have an independent civilian review board for misconduct and complaints? There's our, a picture of our complaint form for those watching. It's pretty simple to fill out, and you can fill it out to your satisfaction, and if you give us enough information, we will follow up on it. Okay. Well, the short answer to this is yes and no. We have a Police Chiefs Advisory Committee, they are an advisory committee, they have no authority, they, they exist to provide me with broader, a broader amount of knowledge, a broader view for my decision-making with the police department. And I appreciate their input, and they have been impactful on the organization, and we started, I believe our first meeting was January of 2017. There is a state law that governs community advisory boards under the bias-based policing law. And again, this is another voluntary measure, police departments are not required to have these boards or these committees by state law. In the capacity that the Police Chiefs Advisory Committee exists, they have the authority to review policies related to bias-based policing, and again, that's governed by the state law. So we use them as our bias-based policing committee, so we give them the authority to review policies regarding bias-based policing. On a little more in-depth note, they are welcome to review any policy they want to bring to my attention or that they want to know more about, and they often will ask me for more information about various topics. My goal is to have the committee drive... My goal is to have the committee drive the conversation so that I can ensure that the police department is, is, uh, listening to the voice of the citizenry. This... The committee has agreed to review complaints related to bias-based policing, so we have to provide them with fair and impartial policing training or some type of racial profiling training every year. They... There has been a discussion on the committee over, overtime to review complaints in general for citizens that are dissatisfied with the outcome of the police investigation. I don't have an issue with that. It, but it would be, I think it would most likely be a case-by-case basis. And our attorneys would have to step in and help me, help me draft some sort of policy or procedure to ensure that confidentiality for both the complainant, uh, witnesses, and the involved officers. We'd have to somehow protect our confidentiality. So I'm not sure what that would look like. It hasn't come about yet, but it is certainly something I'm willing to participate in. Every year, uh, we take on new members. So in the next month or so, we'll start advertising for new members. So anybody that's listening to this or watching this, if it's something that you're interested in and serving your community, I would love for you to, to fill out an application, come in and interview. Some years, we'll have forty people apply. Some years, we'll have three or four. Uh, we usually have about thirteen or thirteen to twenty people apply. I try to keep about thirteen people on the committee. That way, about five to eight will show up every month, and we can conduct business. But every year, when we take on new members, we go through a, an orientation meeting. And, uh, that, I have redacted one of the, one of the agendas from the orientation meeting and put it in the packet that Kelly put online. So people are welcome to take a look at that and get an idea about the ins and outs of what the advisory committee does. How often do we review complaint? And by the way, we meet once a month. I don't know if I said that. Uh, how often do we, do we review complaints? Well, we, by policy, we review them annually. But we also review them as needed for a number of reasons. So if we start to see some common issues occurring in the complaint process, or we start to get some complaints that have things in common with other complaints, then, uh, one, more than one person is doing this on the department, then maybe we need to look at a training issue, and we need to assess those complaints, go back and look at those individual investigations. And then what type of training do we need to craft to prevent that from recurring? So we look at complaints for training issues and training needs. We look for policy shortcoming and modifications. An example of this would be recently, uh, a citizen turned in, um, a significant amount of found cash. And after a reasonable amount of time, the citizen came in and asked what happens to that money. And in years past, that money was moved into the general fund, and that does not incentivize anyone to do the right thing. We all want to benefit from doing the right thing. And in this scenario, uh, if you turned in money, I should think that you would want to benefit from knowing that that money is going to go back to the person that lost it. And you would feel good about that. In lieu of not being able to locate the person that lost it, wouldn't it be nice if that person that found it could have that property given to them after a reasonable amount of time? So we are, we took a look at our policies. We took a look at accreditation policies across the country. Uh, contacted some, uh, area police departments that do return found property to the reporting party. Uh, that turns out is a, is a, uh, best practice. So we are working on crafting a city ordinance and modifying our department policy to allow us to do that. So that's an example of why we would look at a complaint for a policy shortcoming. We look at complaints for personnel when we look at personnel file reviews. So, uh, if we are considering taking disciplinary action against an officer or we are considering someone for promotion, then we're going to do a file review, and we're going to check the complaints file in that process. Is that, does that person have a pattern of getting complaints that are sustained? Uh, I think we can all agree, we don't want someone who doesn't have a good, positive work history being promoted in our organization and having a, a major impact and driving that organization's culture. Uh, we review policy for annual stats compilations. And then we also review policy upon officer request. One example is our beard policy that we changed, I think, in 2017, allowing officers to grow beards. Uh, one presentation that I gave this at, someone said, what's this about beer and officers? No, 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 not while you're on duty. No beer. Beards. So, you know, the officers, uh, wanted to be allowed to grow a beard, so we looked into the ins and outs of having a beard policy, and we did make that change. What is the annual training schedule for each policy? Well... There's, good luck reading it. Who would want to take the time to but me and the folks that I work with? But there are sixty-one policy trainings up there, and it is our goal to train on those throughout the year. Uh, we just implemented a new vendor to do online training. And so when we did that, that'll, and it, that vendor is in conjunction with our policy manual. They're, it is the same company. So the training supports specifically our policy manual, which is an even bigger benefit. And it documents the training as well, and it documents the testing. So, um... This is not an all-encompassing list, by the way, but, but, uh, I'm not going to... I have it listed again in the talking points. If anybody cares to go through that, they can see what we've been training on and our goals for the future. But our goal is to cover those sixty-one policies every year. So you can see that we are continual students of our profession. This does not include our continuing education hours that we're required to get every year. This is something that the officers will do on a catch-as-catch-can basis throughout their day when they come into work. They're responsible to make sure that they're following the training program. And, and they have to provide proof to us that they are following it. And the system that we use audits that for us, so it's pretty simple to do, a pretty slick deal. Complaint statistics. Uh, are you sharing your complaint statistics in the year-end report? Up to this point, I have not included much regarding complaints in the year-end report. And the reason for that is, no one's asked for it. More than happy to share it. Now that I know that it's an item of interest, it will certainly be included going forward in our year-end reports. But I, I, just a snapshot for 2019. We had, uh, sixteen reports where an officer was exonerated. And exonerated means that the investigation disclosed that the alleged act occurred, but that act was justified, lawful, and/or proper. So the officer was doing the right thing in sixteen of those complaints. We had nine that were sustained. Sustained means when the investigation discloses sufficient evidence to establish that the act occurred and that it constituted misconduct. Now misconduct is a very ominous, um, term. Misconduct means that they violated a department policy. An example of department policy that would be misconduct would be pulling your patrol car in forward into a parking space. One of our city safety goals as a department is that we back our patrol cars, our, our city vehicles into the parking space at the station so that we don't back out under duress as we're headed to an emergency call and create unnecessary safety risks. So, again, misconduct can be as little as something like that. Uh, we had nineteen complaints that were unfounded, and that means the investigation disclosed the alleged acts did not occur or did not involve department members. Complaints that are determined to be frivolous will fall within this classification of unfounded. An example of this would be, uh, we had a, a lady make a bias-based policing complaint on a stop sign violation that the officer pulled her over due to her race. We investigated it. It wasn't IPD. That would be a, an example of an unfounded complaint. But it's important to document that because I don't want that driver to go around town telling people that we didn't listen to what she had to say. We did listen, and we investigated it, and then we reported back to her the truth of our findings. We had two complaints that came back not sustained, and that means the investigation disclosed there is insufficient evidence to sustain the complaint or fully exonerate the member. So in other words, we could neither prove nor disprove that the officer did or did, did the right thing or did the wrong thing. Couldn't prove it either way. Two of those. One point that is of interest to the auditors, as you know, we're going through the audit process right now. One thing that they asked, they asked for all this, that's why I was able to provide it. I already had it calculated because of their, their requirements in the audit. And they wanted to know, are you enforcing your policy? Because it's not enough to have a policy. Number one, you need to be able to document that your personnel know the policy. Not just that they read it, but that they know it. So we test on policy, and we document the results of those tests. Number two, you need to show that you're enforcing your policy, because what good is a policy if you're not enforcing it? We could have all the, we could have the best pursuit policy in the world to protect this city. But if I let these officers go out there and drive any way they want, and I don't correct their behavior and hold them accountable to the policy, then we, in fact, have no policy, and that's not appropriate. So the auditors wanted to know, are you enforcing your policy? In 2019, remember this, we had nine sustained complaints. We had eight disciplinary actions. So we took documented disciplinary action on every violation of department policy except for one. And I don't know what that one was. It was probably something along the lines of, uh, a, a decision made out of ignorance, such as they didn't take, I can think of one right now. Uh, and I don't know if it was in 2019, but we had a complaint where the officers didn't take the call because they made the determination without driving to the scene that that house was not inside the city. Well, shame on them, it was inside the city. You're going to have a reasonable response to that. And somewhere, we documented a coaching session where I sat down with each one of those officers and said, hey, that house is inside the city. Here's where you went wrong in your decision-making path. Don't do that again. And then, of course, they get some friendly advice, like, go take the call anyway. What's the harm? You know? All right. So then the question that I have for, I mean, in this, in this case, because they're asking the questions, the Diversity Task Force Policing Subcommittee, but really, anybody that wants to come forward and, and visit with the police department. Uh, what do you want to see? Commissioners, what statistics do you want to see? City manager, what statistics do you want to see? Police Chiefs Advisory Committee, you know? What do you want to see? What do you want to know from us? We're an open book. I don't have, uh, researchers on staff. You're looking at the entire research staff right now. So, uh, for the most part. But I will do my best to share what information that I, in between other responsibilities, can gather for you. Uh, I'm happy to provide anything that, that's, uh, an open record. And again, we make changes to what we report to the, to the community every year based on citizen and activist request or the, um, advisory committee request. And this is a good time to point out that, as a result of this discussion, uh, you guys will be receiving a report in the near future, in the coming months, regarding some specifics about use of force. Specifically, how independent police officers are using the use-of-force decision. The Police Chiefs Advisory Committee has made some very specific requests for information that they would like to see shared with the community. So, uh, as time, as the opportunity presents itself, I'll begin research on that project. The next thing, uh, the Diversity Task Force appreciates current policies in place, but what happens when I leave and the next chief may not have the same priorities as I do? Well, uh... Maybe a little bit self-serving, but I think that these policies that we're operating under right now are just pure genius. So, uh, but, uh, no, in, in all seriousness, I, in today's time, uh, I know you guys don't get the opportunity to go to the meetings in professional organizations in law enforcement, but I just had a meeting this week, and we were discussing some of these very topics as, as police chiefs. What are we doing? What are, what are you guys doing over here? What are we doing over in Salina? What are we doing in Coffeyville? You know, around the state, we talked about what we're doing as far as police reforms are concerned. These discussions are happening. I guess we're just not put, they're, for whatever reason, they don't get put on ESPN. So, um, see what I can do about that. But, no, we do have these discussions. Uh, so the policies and things that I put in place are basically best practices. The things that we're working on are best practices. And I think that, uh, any experienced, uh, critically-thinking police chief that comes along after me will probably maintain most of everything that we're doing right now. And if anything, I suspect that they would improve upon it. And so I, that's my sincerest hope is that the, you know... However long I'm here, hopefully a long time, but, um, you know, I'm just trying to carry the ball a little farther than the last person did. But, um... Policies are written by attorneys. So the policy manual that we use is specific to our state. Uh, and then, of course, we edit it to be specific to independence. And, um, but it's written by attorneys. It's written by experts. This is what they do. They write policy for a living. I don't. So they base the policies on, on Kansas statutes annotated. They base it on US codes. They base it on best practices in law enforcement, and they base it on case law that comes down from the appellate courts, either from the state of Kansas and as well as the federal courts. So it's very, there's a lot of thought that goes into this. The only way that I am aware of to provide permanence to any policy is to enshrine it in ordinance. It is, again, it is not the Jerry Show. This is the city, city of independence, and ultimately, that is your decision. As your subject matter expert, I would caution you against enshrining department policies in ordinance for a lot of reasons. Number one, uh, policy is a good policy. I, I always tell the officers I work with, good policy is a pen stroke away. If you, if you see a problem with a policy and you think it doesn't follow state law or you think it doesn't serve our citizens best, or it doesn't serve our officers best, bring it to my attention. We'll take a look at it as a team, and we'll make a decision. If we need to make a change, we just make the change. It's that easy. Unless you put it into ordinance. And again, they're based on current laws, current best practices, and current case law. And we need to be able to rapidly change that policy because tomorrow, the Supreme Court can make a ruling that impacts our policy manual. And we don't want to have to wait until we can get it on the agenda and get it in front of the commission because if we do that, in the in-between time, we're forcing the officer to make a decision between following policy or following the law. Do I break the law and expose the city to liability and do my own thing and follow the policy manual? Or do I expose myself to potential discipline for violating the policy manual, but yet follow the law? So I just, I think it makes something that is efficient cumbersome and exposes the city or the employee needlessly. The other issue that could arise, and this is not a comment towards anybody in the room, but from a practicality perspective. Occasionally, you'll have someone occupying a political office that has an agenda. And we don't want our policy manual to become politicized. And your personal, my personal opinion, your personal opinion should not be put into our policy manual. And so if, if you had a commission that didn't see the value in changing a policy, then it could expose the city to liabilities again. And it's not necessarily, um, each portion of our government has a role. Uh, the commission doesn't take direct oversight of personnel and departmental policies. They make cities, they make decisions that guide the city as a whole. And let's talk about oversight for a minute. The commissioners answer, your power derives from the people. And I remind the people that I work with that our power in a democracy derives from the people. We don't get to make it up as we go along. We have to follow the will of the people, as do you. Our city manager has to follow your will, and I have to follow the will of the city manager. And commission members are elected from all walks of life. And while exceptions do occur, you don't typically have a professional background in law enforcement. And so you, I respect, in my experience and the entire time that I've been with the city, our commissioners have listened to their subject matter experts in all disciplines. And that's how it should happen, and that is what's best for each of us as we, uh, live, work, and play in our community. However, there are, um, some policies that, uh... Another issue that can come about from putting policy into ordinance is the unintended consequences of making policies law. Do we want to make low-level misconduct a criminal act? I don't think we want to do that. Do we want to make it a criminal act for those officers to make the mistake that that house was in, not inside the city? I don't think we want to criminalize that and have an officer cited into court because they made the mistake of not taking a call because they thought the house was outside the city. Uh, also, how would that affect, um, as far as, and this goes down into the weeds, and I can explain it, but it's probably not worth going into tonight. But it would impact employees' rights. As an employer, I can force an officer to give a s- As an employer, I can force an officer to give a statement. Now, that, that officer's statement cannot be used against them in court, but we can use it as a disciplinary or retention decision depending on the level of misconduct. If you put policy into ordinance, I can no longer do that. That would be a violation of their Miranda rights at that point. So if anybody wants to look that concept up, it's called a garrity, G-A-R-R-I-T-Y. You can look that up on the internet and you can study about government employees' garrity rights versus your criminal Miranda rights. Two separate issues. One is civil related to employment and then of course Miranda is related to criminal charges and questioning. All right. Again, if you make policy in ordinance, we wouldn't be able to function under the garrity rights. So it would not be good for our department. And of course, it could create issues with prosecution and, and employee retention as officers are not going to want to work under that environment. And furthermore, an officer that gets cited for a policy violation into court, how is that going to translate to their court testimony going down the road? Are we going to be able to use that officer to testify at trial? Once they've been adjudicated a criminal simply because they violated a policy? I don't think any of those things are reasonable. And they're not necessary. But I do believe that there is a path forward together. And much like when you go into your mechanic to have your car fixed, you know, you, you don't go into the mechanic and say, listen, it's making this really weird sound, so what I want you to do is take the back bumper off, put it on the front, pull the windshield out and tape it to the bottom. Nobody does that because we trust our mechanic. When we go to the mechanic, we say it's making this really strange noise and then we make a noise that makes us look a little bit silly and then the mechanic goes, oh yeah, I know what that is. And then you trust the mechanic to figure out his or her own way to fix your car, right? That's the same situation we're in here. So the path, my opinion is, the path forward together is, what is it that the Diversity Task Force Subcommittee wants to accomplish? And then what is it that I can do to help them be comfortable with the response they get to the police department? And I believe that there's a path forward together. I think among those things that could be put into ordinance is data collection for bias-based policing. Again, the whole state of Missouri, that's a state law. You have to do that as a police department. There are penalties for police departments that don't follow that law. So I, I think that would be a good thing. One thing we could consider is the establishment in city ordinance of a community advisory board. The other thing is, again, post our policies online. So there are things that we need to sit down together and hash out and see what is it we can work together on and, and because we have the same goal, I've already talked with them what their goal is. Their goal is exactly the same as mine and that's to make Independence a better community. So, and by the way, we have already begun sitting down and having those conversations. So it's, it's, I am, I'm pleased to be a part of that and pleased to be able to, that they've given me the opportunity to go through this process with them. As a result of the conversations, another thing that you're going to be getting a report on in the near future is community advisory boards. And so I think there's, if it doesn't come up later, I'll, I'll bring it up again later and we'll go into that a little more in-depth. They had some questions on the, on, on the budget. They wanted to know, what are we spending on training? Our 2020 authorization for training is $24,000. Our 2019 actual was a little over $18,000 that was spent on training. KLETC, the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center, provides the 560-hour basic training program to all new officers. And by the way, anybody out there watching that feels like they need to make a difference in their community, we are hiring. And we will send you to academy and we will pay you to go to academy and we'll provide you with everything you need to step out onto the street and be a cop. But anyway, that 560-hour basic training program does not cost the city of Independence a dime, other than we do pay the officers wages as they go through the course for 14 weeks. That is paid for by violators and by those who put license plates on their various and sundry mobile items. KSA 70, well, state statute requires us to have 40 hours of in-service training every year. In 2019, we had 17 officers out of, we have an, we have an authorized strength of 21 officers. We had 17 personnel filling the role of police officer out of 21 on, in 2019. We had a total of 680 hours of training at a minimum to maintain each officer's certification under state law. However, I'm pleased to report to you that IPD officers attended 1,906 hours of training, 180% over the required minimum. The average cost of that training was $9.52 per training hour. And that includes all travel expenses. It does not however include ammunition or expendable items, overtime, fuel or vehicle maintenance. But I still think that's a pretty good buy when you look at the level of professionalism that you guys are allowing to go out onto the streets. And I think we're doing a really great job with our personnel and, and building a good resource for our community through training. Firearms and ammunition, the actual for that expense in 2019 was $868.72. This number is eventually going to have to go up, 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 way up. As most folks that are local know, due to poor decision-making in the past by, by a police chief, we have a surplus of ammunition. So at some point, we're going to have to start budgeting for ammunition, but right now it's, it's very economical for us. And by the way, we do have a, an inventory of that and we are looking at what can be surplus and sold under city ordinance. So we, that is a, one of the projects that our officers are engaged in right now is trying to recover as much money as we can for the city out of that surplus ammunition that should not have been purchased in the first place. Then they had some questions about our liability insurance. Our liability insurance provider is EMC Insurance. The cost is $9,798 annually and we get a 10% discount for using the policy manual system that we use from Lexipol. So I think that goes to show how, how that system is viewed across our country when insurers are saying, we, we recognize that you're saving us money in risk, so we're going to give you a lower premium simply because of the policy manual that you've chosen to How can the Diversity Task Force help? Well, I'm going to talk to the community for a minute at large. And I would say to you, exercise the same level of empathy and respect for officers that officers are expected to provide the community. The street is not the place to debate. If you feel like you are being treated inappropriately, I pledge to you that we will look into it in an impartial manner. If you feel like you have been the victim of criminal conduct by a police officer, you need to report that. It will be investigated in an impartial manner. But please, please, don't have it out with the police officer on the side of the street. That's when disaster happens for every, nobody wins. And you certainly will, are not likely to win in that scenario. Assume good intentions until evidence supports otherwise. What do I mean by that? When I get an email from someone, we talk about this internally all the time and I bet everybody in this room has gotten an email from a coworker and said, that, that jerk, wait till I find him. And then you go and you find him and you say, what in the heck were you trying to say here? And what do you get? That, hey, I'm sorry it came off that way. That's certainly not the way I intended it. Instead of being offended by that Facebook post, instead of being offended by that email or that note that someone pinned you, assume good intentions. Assume that that person had, had a good heart when they wrote that and that they were just trying to make things better. Now, don't be silly. When you uncover evidence to the contrary, then we deal with that. But in the initial outset, assume good intentions until, until you have reason to otherwise. Be willing to support and recognize the achievements of IPD and its relationship with the community. What am I talking about here? Thank you cards. I wished I would have kept track of the amount of food and gift cards to different food places around town. Thank you cards, homemade food, desserts, meals, catered dinners that were delivered to the police station unsolicited by our citizens. I am astounded at the level of support that our officers get and these guys think it's normal. In my career, before I came here, I had one citizen cook Christmas dinner for my shift because she was a business owner and we had captured someone breaking into her business. One. And we were out for lunch one night and someone paid for all, my whole shift's dinner while, unbeknownst to us, we went to pay and someone had paid for it. I couldn't even begin to tell you, you know what, I encourage you to take me out to lunch because there's about a 50/50 chance someone is going to pick up the tab for us. And we'll never know until we get up to the register. But it happens all the time and I'm just astounded. But I can tell you, we have written well over 30 thank you cards to individuals, businesses, churches, group, church groups and organizations for donations of food, gift cards, equipment and et cetera since the pandemic started. Another piece of evidence that supports how the police department is viewed in our community is that we were included in the Community Unity Event in the George Floyd, in the wake of the George Floyd tragedy. We have also been invited to Diversity Task Force vigils in the past, including the Dallas Five murder, where the police officers were, were murdered during a protest down in Dallas. A lot of people probably aren't aware, but the Indian, try to get this out, okay? The Indian Criminology and Forensic Science Association had a webinar series for 2020 and they must have felt like the community policing that the Independence Police Department, they must feel like we were doing something right because they asked me to come give an hour and a half presentation just on our community policing programs. So that was an interesting experience to be on a Zoom meeting with 90 members of a professional organization on the other side of the world. I came in at seven something in the morning and it was 5:30 at night for them. So that, that was really neat and the, the interest and the respect that they showed in the topic was pretty rewarding. They, they asked some pretty strange questions. So there are some, some myths surrounding American law enforcement across the world, but, but it was, that was a neat experience. And so I, but again, I think that's because they're looking at what we're doing and recognizing it as a success. Some other things that show, that I believe show our community supports us. The outer vest carriers were, were purchased for officers initially under a donation for almost $3,000. Our K-9 program raised, has raised over $40,000 to date and we're trying, we're doing our best to manage that program without touching the general fund. I can't say with 100% certainty that we don't spend money out of the general fund on that program, but I can tell you that it has not raised the bottom line on our budget request every year. Our, we have a juvenile intake room. I should have taken pictures of it, but our juvenile intake room has a lot of, huge pile of, Kathy Shepherd's not here, but Kathy Shepherd brought in sirens and snacks. She got a grant so that we can give kids in need snacks whenever we bring them into our juvenile room. There's toys, there's stuffed animals, there's diapers, there's, there's chalkboard paint on the cabinet doors for the kids, there's carpeting, put down a TV, microwave. It's in there, baby formula, it's in there. It's in there. And it did not come from, from the general fund, not a penny from the general fund. That was all provided by our community. The next topic, or the next thing that I would say to the Diversity Task Force is what the Diversity Task Force tells the community. And what they are, this is the Diversity Task Force Policing Subcommittee is demonstrating this because we are sitting down and working through these, this conversation together and that is that we are better together. This is not a competition. It is not a us versus them. This is your police department looking at your community and saying, how can we better serve you? And that's going to get the best, that's, that's going to best serve our, our citizens and the taxpayers. As a police department, we're ready to have those conversations. I've been invited to various vigils and community unity events. I've presented with Diversity Task Force member Pastor Barker, he was here earlier. He's also on the Police Chiefs Advisory Committee. He's also on the Diversity Task Force and the Policing Subcommittee. He and I spoke together in the wake of the George Floyd tragedy. And you know, this is something that you need to always remember is that diversity includes all voices. We need to, we need to include those who we believe need to change. In other words, if you feel like the police, the police department needs to improve, you cannot, you cannot improve it by being oppositional. You need to come and work with us. That's how change happens, by working together. We need to understand that, you know, again, include everyone in the discussion, particularly those that are impacted by these change, any changes that you are wanting to make. And that's just good leadership in general. Understand that other views have validity and changing systems is far more complicated than it appears. Changing systems can have unintended consequences that sometimes hurt more than they help. And change must be evaluated based on facts and evidence, not emotional, what's trendy, anecdotal, evidence or media hype. And by the way, some other things, we, we've been donated radio ad time in the past and we also are invited to do PSA commercials on the local radio station that's sponsored by our area businesses. So I think that also goes to show the support that our community has. This, this slide is the, the advertisement that they sent out for the presentation to the professional organization in India. And there's no one-size-fits-all solutions. You know, we need to consider the problems facing our community and collaborate to address what specifically needs to be addressed here. The activists in Chicago or LA or Boston have different challenges than the activists in Wichita, Topeka or Independence. And we all need to recognize that and work together on what is applicable to our citizens. We are not going to change the world. We are going to change our community. Now, what will happen is the community will look to us as a shining light and they will change to be like us. That's the goal. So hopefully by working together, we can impact change globally, but really the only thing we can affect is right here. And that's what we need to be looking at, that's what we need to be talking about, not necessarily what's happening somewhere else, unless it is happening here. So no one, no one-size-fits-all solutions. We need to have holistic approaches to everything that we, that we take a look at. There is no one miracle cure for social problems. And again, those solutions need to be applicable to our community and based on evidence and research. So community oversight boards, in the near future, they, the, there's a desire by the Policing Subcommittee to develop some kind of community oversight board. In the beginning, when I, when I started this process, you can see in the notes there that I didn't think that that was a very practical suggestion, but having met, met with, and remember, we need to be open that we might be wrong. And in meeting with other police chiefs across the state this week, I have gained some new knowledge and gotten some new resources. So this is something that I'm looking at right now. But in lieu of that, I think there needs to be some discussion about the oversight that currently exists. So we have a shift supervisor that's over each of the four shifts. We have a captain that, that runs operations and then you have myself that is responsible for everyone's conduct. Each officer has body cameras. Each uniformed officer has body cameras. The cars, most of the cars have functioning car cameras in them. What's interesting to me is, is that we're, we're not a big department, but we're just big enough that we're constantly having to fix something. So everything isn't working all of the time, but we try to keep up with it within the resources that we're given. We try to keep those things functioning as best we can. And by the way, I work with some very respectful police officers and I really appreciate that. But one of the rare moments you might see them throw a temper tantrum is if they feel like they're not being listened to when their body camera doesn't work. They are very possessive about their body cameras and they are very demanding that that body camera functions and functions the way it was designed. And I don't blame them. In this day and age, I would not want to work the street without a body camera either. So we do everything we can and we put a significant amount of budget, as you guys are aware, into the body cameras. We record almost every phone line and all the radio frequencies that we talk on. We monitor for bias-based policing. We monitor our complaints. We monitor discipline. If we see an officer that has a certain number of complaints every year, or maybe they violate a certain number of policies every year, at some point we will pull them in and do what we call an early warning and we will say, hey, talk to us, what's going on in your personal life? What, what can we do to help because we see you're having a struggle here? And if they have a good, if they, if they have a good heart, then that's someone we want to work with and we want to train. then that's someone we want to work with and we want to train them and we want to develop them and help them improve. If it's someone that, whose heart is not in the right place, then trust me, we'll start looking towards moving them along. But we do monitor for those things. So that's internally. Now there is a demand for external oversight. Well, of course, we have the city manager who has direct oversight of the police department. We have the city commission who has indirect oversight of the police department. The Police Chiefs Advisory Committee has a level of oversight. The Lexipol audit that we are voluntarily undergoing right now is another level of oversight. We have civilian volunteers that work on our department in various roles. The Police Chiefs Advisory Committee participates in job interviews for hiring and promotion. And we appreciate their input. They've been impactful in the decision-making for the personnel that we hire. We have civilian volunteers. We have restarted our auxiliary program and completely revamped it to make it a strong, well-documented program that doesn't unnecessarily expose the city to liability. And why do we do that? Because we see that if you have volunteers working on the police department, these are people whose living, their family's well-being, their own financial well-being is not jeopardized by their conduct as it relates to the police department. Wouldn't a civilian volunteer who doesn't need the paycheck be more likely to blow the whistle on misconduct internally? I believe that they would, and that's what the research says. And when you look at community policing studies, having volunteers in your organization is a big part of community policing. So I consider civilian volunteers that work with us to be a form of police department oversight. Probably one of the more effective forms of it because they get to see how the sausage is made. They're right there in the middle of it. They see the confidential things. They know who's doing what. So they have a direct line there. Now, some other accountability practices that we have. We have an in-depth hiring process that again, is governed by a policy. We have a release of recordings is governed by a policy and by state statute. And then of course, the year-end reports that we provide. Those are all levels of some sort of oversight. And if you look in those notes, you'll see there where I wrote that citizen review boards are not practical. Well, it's time for a little humility here on my part. Because again, I reserve the right to change my mind as more information comes in. And this is one of those areas that I think I may be turning a corner on as I start to learn more about it. But some of the thoughts that I have towards some things that need to be, some concerns that I would like to see addressed is, when we look at professional review boards, we look at professionals of that discipline. So plumbers govern plumbers, dentists govern dentists. I don't want to go to a hospital that's managed by plumbers and electricians. And I don't want to buy a house in a community whose electrical board is managed by school bus drivers or janitors. Not that there's anything wrong with those professions, but I don't know that I want to trust them with my electrical safety when I'm trying to sleep at night. And I think everyone can understand that. So that's a hurdle that we can discuss. There of course is some method of collaboration that we can work on here that gets to the level of transparency and oversight that people want to see, particularly as it regards police complaints. But there's also some issues of confidentiality that I'm concerned with. So you know, I want to talk with our attorneys about that before we get too far down the road. One of the things to consider is, is that we have a very small department. If an officer gets in trouble in our department, I can't really come out and say, "We had this particular scenario happen." Because everybody on the department is going to know exactly who I'm talking about and exactly how much trouble they got in. And that's a personnel issue. And the city policy is personnel is confidential. So I have to be sensitive to that. I don't want to embarrass people, you know? So you know, I don't want to drive morale down low. I don't want to create unnecessary turnover by creating a hostile environment. So I try to be sensitive to the issues of confidentiality. The other issue that I think about is, no one is going to be legally liable for the outcomes of officer conduct but me, the city manager, and the officer themselves. That's who gets named in the lawsuit. Not you, probably not you, and definitely not a advisory board. So ultimately, it needs to be the police chief and city manager's decision as to how things proceed. Because we're the ones that have the expertise. We're the ones that understand HR. We're the ones that know how to protect the city from a liability lawsuit. But again, we need to sit down and talk about goals and what the desire to achieve, what do they want to achieve? And then what can we do to get there together? Again, I think there is plenty of opportunity for common ground on this topic, particularly after what I've learned in the last week or so. So the next topic was surveys. The, a member of the Policing Subcommittee did a survey. And on the one hand, I'm thrilled that somebody cared enough about the relationship between the police department and the community to do a survey on it. I'm exceedingly pleased that IPD came out in a positive light in this survey. However, I have to acknowledge that while the survey may accurately represent the views of a small pocket of our community, I cannot say that it is a valid sampling of the community at large. So, and the reason I have to say that is because, you know, this survey was directed towards students at ICC Family of Christ Church and then folks that follow the Diversity Task Force Facebook page. Not that there's anything wrong with surveying that group of people. But imagine if I had an axe to grind with the police department and I went down to the jail and I started doing surveys with every person as they got bonded out of jail. Are we going to get an accurate, valid sample of what the citizens of Independence think of their police department as we interview people that are being released from jail? I would argue no. And so, so that I can maintain the moral high ground with someone that would do something unethical like that, I have to, I have to put a little qualifier in front of this survey and say, "It does represent these groups accurately." What I would prefer though, is that, you know, we actually have it in our policy manual to conduct surveys and what types of surveys we're supposed to be conducting. And that is also a part of our strategic, the community-based strategic plan, by the way. So it's something I've been working on here and there over time. But one of the reasons that I would like to be involved in those type of efforts is, I have access to the Bureau of Justice Statistics and the Department of Justice Studies and their surveys. And so as a team, we can start, I can ask some questions. What is it that you guys want to measure? What do you want to know about your police department, its relationship with the community? And then we can, as a team, we can go into these various survey tools that exist and we can start pulling questions off of those surveys and putting them into our own. One of the reasons that that's a good idea is because, as you know, there are entire educational disciplines. You can get a PhD in how to write a survey question, right? These are validated, tested, scientifically created survey questions. I know it seems silly, but it's true. And so, you know, we just need to look at, what do we want to measure? The question's probably already out there and already written for us in a way that is best, as close to unbiased as you can get. We can also work with our local educators to design that survey. And then we can work together to target a valid sample. As a city government, we have resources that we can use to survey a broader sample of our community. So again, you know, I welcome the opportunity to do surveys and hear more voices and better serve our citizens. The final topic is, let me go through this. So again, we get down to collaboration is key in that discussion. Because I don't, I don't pretend to know what it is that everybody in this community wants to know about its police department. Only the citizens can tell me that. I have an idea, but I have found that my ideas are often inaccurate. And thank goodness, I have citizens that have stepped forward and challenged my ideas so that we can do a better job of reporting what citizens want to know. The last topic of discussion, we're almost done. Only 17 hours in. The last topic of discussion is mental health crisis response teams. So this is a topic that we've been kicking back and forth with four county mental health for some time now. We've tried to find grant funding for it. We haven't been able to. And it's expensive to do this. One of the questions that was asked is, "Is it possible to design a mental health team to respond when a military response is not immediately necessary?" And I included this exact quote from the questions, not to be oppositional to anyone. I include it because I think this is a valid topic to talk about because they did not come up with this term "military response" on their own. This is what's in the media. Well, I'm here to tell you, police departments do not make military responses, right? This is an inflammatory word that is bandied about in the media. "We make tactical responses that are subject to the Constitution, applicable statutes, policy, and case law." Military response, like chokehold, is inflammatory and misleading and is, again, is a tool that we see to twist the truth nationally. Again, we have worked with four county mental health. One of the goals that I would like to get going is a crisis intervention team in Montgomery County. The issue is that a crisis intervention team is exactly that. It is a team. And it is geared towards dealing with people that are in a mental health crisis. And it's a 40-hour training block. The problem is, is that to have a team, you got to have everybody on board. And up to this point, I've not been able, or we as a county, have not all gotten on board with this process. One of the, one nice thing that we had a meeting yesterday and all the law enforcement leaders and our county prosecutor are on the same page here. And it appears that we want to move forward together and begin exploring developing a crisis intervention team here in Montgomery County. So I'm looking forward to that. We will, and I already know that four county mental health will support that. The reason that you have to do that is because the training is expensive, but it's free to us. But the organization is not going to come down, travel across the state to provide that training to us unless as an area, as a region, as a county, we're not going to come together and build the team. So the good news is, is that since I wrote this, one of the things that has changed is that we are all talking about partnering together to build that crisis intervention team. However, up to this point, we've been doing what we can. And one of the things is, we have been sending IPD personnel off to crisis intervention training at every opportunity. And four county mental health has supported us in that by helping defray the training costs. So I appreciate their support. Our goal is to have all of our uniformed officers trained in CIT. And we've had a number go through it. It's going to take us a while to get there if we can't get the training here in Montgomery County for a team program. So, and again, when it comes to dealing with the mentally ill or persons in a crisis, I want everybody to know, we have a policy for that. And that policy is in that source document there. So that's all I have to say. And I'll go off script dangerously so because I'm not very good at that. But I hope that one of the overriding messages that everybody listening to this presentation has taken away from it is, "We have a policy for that. We have a statute that guides that decision. We have a court case that guides that decision." Much to the chagrin of the national media, police officers are not a rogue bunch of people out there doing what they want to do. It is a very structured profession, no different than being a paramedic, no different than being a doctor, no different than being a lawyer. And again, we are not winging it. We are following written practices. So thank you guys for hearing me. Thank you to the Diversity Task Force members for bringing these topics up and giving me the opportunity to share something that's probably on everybody's mind. And thank you, Police Chiefs Advisory Committee members, for coming out tonight.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate you making a presentation tonight and taking time to prepare the information. One thing that really stands out is what you've presented is already in place. We've had discussions the last five or six months. And the questions that I had, you already had answers and they were already in place. That you're not acting in crisis mode, that we've got a situation and now we've got to respond. But you had been preparing action, what you presented tonight, that's been developing over the years that you've been chief. And I appreciate that forethought. And I know that, I feel comfortable that as we go forward, it's not going to stop, that you've reached a point that says, "I'm done. I've got it there." That you're looking at this evolving as things change. And I really appreciate you having that concern that for the community and for your officers and for the city, that you're making those preparations and you're being sensitive to the needs and you're listening to the people. And thank you very much. As Commissioner, I appreciate that representation in our community and your presentation and representation of the City of Independence. Thank you very much. So that concludes our business tonight. So with that, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second that motion.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, meeting adjourned. Thank you. Thank you for coming.